Perhaps for future broadcasts over there as well.
So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to all, everyone here. We're so looking forward to presenting the FY19 proposed budget for the schools. We've been at this budget for several months now, starting last October, doing a lot of work with our teachers, as well as the administration and our department heads, facilities in IT, presenting requests. You know that initially, I presented a proposal, the superintendent's recommended budget, in December. That, in that budget, we had hoped to lower some class sizes across the district, particularly in classrooms where we have average class sizes of 25 or higher. We had targeted those areas. And we were also looking to continue to enhance our instructional program with the acquisition of new materials. We were looking to expand our IT program, and we were looking forward to also making sure that our new strategic plan and mission and vision of our schools is a part of that. The budget is really a policy document, and it's developed based upon the needs of our students, the number that we have enrolled, and the diversity of our curriculum in order to meet the needs of students. And so, those are the things in our strategic plan that we talk about in terms of making sure that the social and emotional needs of our students are met, also making sure that they have a good, safe environment to work in, and that we're working together in a community, and working together with mutual respect and problem solving. So, that's our goal, to have students who are independent thinkers, critical thinkers, and who will be our next leaders in our society. And certainly, the students of the Lunenburg Public Schools always make us very proud. I really want to extend some thanks to Mr. Mike Cassidy, who is with us this evening. You know, Mr. Cassidy joined us as the school year got underway, as our new business director, as well as HR director. And we are, I really appreciated working with Mr. Cassidy, and he's brought a lot of good ideas and protocols to our budget development. And he filled almost those great big shoes that Sandy Curley, his predecessor, left. So, we're grateful for Mike to be here, and I'm also grateful to all the principals who are here this evening as well, to answer any questions specific to their particular budgets. You know, the budget that we presented initially was a 5.5% increase budget. We know that our increase from the state was about 3% to the governor's budget, and that's what our town manager's recommended budget is. So, a couple weeks ago, the school committee did vote the bottom line of our budget, and the budget that I'm presenting tonight is that 3% budget that will carry forward to Town Hall. And we'll give you some highlights of that. But first, I wanted to begin with an overview of our school enrollment. Now, this has lots of numbers on it, because I wanted you to have those numbers. This shows you March enrollment by grade level and by school across the district from 2014 through 2018. And you can see that we're seeing a slight increase in our overall enrollment. Some of our enrollments are staying steady in terms of our schools, and others are showing a slight or moderate increase. In order to demonstrate that, I wanted to show you that the primary school, over this period of time, and these were all March data points, from 2014 to 2018, so the current March, you can see the overall enrollment there at the Lunenburg Primary School. And remember, that includes our preschool enrollment as well. So, the primary school, when we look at those numbers in October, sometimes they're a little bit lower, because our preschool continues to grow over the course of the year. But by the time we reach March, we're really at our maximum enrollment within the preschool. So, the March measure is a really good measure to have an idea of what the total population is at the primary school. At the primary school, we have one grade level, that we have six teachers for the grade level, and that's first grade. We did that very mindfully this past year, in order to create a smaller class size for the students, and there are 121 students, I believe, in the first grade, but to create the lowest class size possible in order for those students to have that best support as they begin that very important reading process. And so, that's an overall view of the primary school. At Turkey Hill Elementary School, the total enrollment for that same period of time, you could see that last year, you might recall, that we had two grade levels at Turkey Hill that had six sections of, per grade level, six teachers. And this year, that enrollment dipped down a little bit. We have only one class, one grade level at Turkey Hill that currently has six teachers with it. The other two grade levels have five teachers. As we look at the middle school, and I'm sure you all recall, our amazement at the beginning of the school year, when an already large class at, going into the middle school, grew by leaps and bounds. We had an unprecedented growth of nine students, I think 13 new students. When we took out the students that had moved away, we ended up with an overall increase of nine. And that particular class did start out very large, in the 150s. You can see in March that their enrollment, if you go back to that second slide of the presentation, they have leveled down to about 147, 148, which is also the size of our eighth grade class there. So, two very large classes, classes the size that we used to see at Lunenburg, probably two decades ago, in those 140s, 150 range. And so, our enrollment is increasing, and yet we feel it's manageable as we've been increasing. We've been fortunate to have the distribution across the grades, and have been able to be responsive in terms of adding teachers. We still would like to lower class sizes even further. We really start talking about that when there's 125 students at the grade level. It really becomes a necessity if, when we reach that 130, is my recommendation, to put in that succession. And then, at the high school, that you can see that we've had steady increase in the enrollment there at the high school as well, over the same period of time. These include our choice students, which is where the bulk of the 40 students that we bring into the district, I think 38 of them are there at the high school. In our upcoming year, you know, the district has taken the steps, because we have a large class coming in from eighth grade, even with our students who will leave us to go to vocational schools or other secondary schools. We did not open to choice this year, because we want to keep the class sizes there at the high school, and manage the enrollment at the high school as well. We've worked hard across the district to continue to maintain class sizes, maintain a diverse curriculum for our students, support all our learners, and so, we felt that that was important, and the school committee has only opened choice this year for students who are currently enrolled in Lunenburg High School, and who will then continue, if they move from our community, they will have the opportunity to continue. So, it would be those students in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade would have that opportunity as choice students. So, overall, when you look at our enrollment from 2014, 1568, up to 1637, when we looked at that March timeline, in the March State Report that's issued to the DESC. So, you can see that slight increase. One of the things that we want to really pay attention to and thank our administrators, Mrs. Hanscom, who's our special ed director, and all the teachers that have contributed to this, and the parents who have worked with us, are the decrease, a very significant decrease, you can see, in the students that are placed out of district. And in order to accomplish that, we have added services, as well as programs, within the district, in order to serve students in their home-school community. And we have always, in Lunenburg, been strongly committed to that. We began that process over 20 years ago, and feel like we've been a leader in our inclusion. And high-quality services for students with disabilities is important to all of us. Our student, our student body is very inclusive in terms of making sure that everyone feels a part of the, of the school, and is able to participate in, in activities, and we offer a variety of those. But I did want to show this particular sign, because this has budget implications as well. We know that, that out-of-district placements can be expensive. We also know that there's a cost to making sure that the services are provided here. But when we look at all of those things, we know that, that our ethical, our moral obligation to do the best for all our students that are here, and provide those services, coupled with making it economically the right thing to do, is a win-win for everyone. I had Mr. Cassidy put together some information about Chapter 70 funds, which we, for the prior two, prior two years, had been able to see some significant increase in the monies that the state was supporting Lunenburg through the Chapter 70 program. So, he's looked at the local appropriation, as well as the Chapter 70 funds, and has some statistics to share on that. Mr. Cassidy?
Good evening, everyone. So, the slide in front of you, it really has two points. We were talking about a cost per pupil, and then there's a breakdown on the local budget, and how the local funds and Chapter 70 funds have been working for the district. So, at the top of the slide, we're talking about pupil, cost per pupil in district. So, we're taking the out-of-district costs, and it has gone up slightly. We've had additional money from local and state funds to expend that money. Last fiscal year, last school year, the cost per student was about $13,047. That's approximately $2,300 less than the state average. That calculation, just so you know, involves all types of costs within the district, from teaching, paras, heating, electricity. It's rolled into a calculation that, which is done by the state, it's not done by the business office. And it also includes grants, and it's divided by the numbers, full-time students. So, it's not, it's, the number is slightly different than the numbers that the superintendent presented. It's, when people, when students leave in and out of the district, they kind of quantify that, and that's, that's the number that's, that's applied to that. The next, next part of the slide is talking about how the, the town has been receiving an increase in Chapter 70 funds over the last five years, and the town appropriation. And back in FY14, 33% of the Chapter 70 funds were used for the school department budget. What is being proposed this, for next school year, is 37% of our Chapter 70 funds being used for our local budget. Now, that being said, there, we've had a significant increase in local funds, excuse me, Chapter 70 funds. We've been able to allocate more of those funds to the budget. And I think that's all we want to say. So, it, we're in pretty good shape. And one thing I did not say to the finance committee, which I want to say to you, you know, the Chapter 70 funds should not drastically change if our student population doesn't change, and we've got a governor, and House of Representatives, and senators, who are very supportive of local Chapter 70 funds. So, I don't see that, that formula changing anytime soon. So, that's, that's a positive sign. Thank you.
When we presented to FinCom, Representative Benson was actually at the meeting as well, and she was talking about the efforts that she has been spearheading in terms of making sure that the chapter, the circuit breaker funding continues to be as strong as possible, that at full funding is in the upper 70%. And there's a rather complex formula, as most of the formulas are for state funding. But this year, the revenues were only allocated out to districts at 65%. Now, the good news about this is, we kind of know how this works with the state at times, and so, our projections were based upon 65%. So, where some districts might have budgeted with an anticipation of circuit breaker being higher at the 75% or 70%, we did project out our costs, our, we projected where to assign the costs for the tuitions based upon a 65% ratio. And so, we will continue to monitor the efforts, because I know the efforts continue, to try to provide more funding in the circuit breaker area, both this year, as well as next year. And that certainly will help with regard to our budget for next year, because currently, we do not have any funds in there for unanticipated placements. So, if we were to have an unanticipated placement, we would have to either look at where in the budget we can pull it from, and depending upon the time of year, that becomes more difficult than not. It's going to be difficult regardless. So, circuit breaker funds, if they are increased, certainly could provide some, some good potential to at least offset any of those unexpected costs that may come up. Because in order to bring this budget in at 3%, which was where the town manager felt that that would fit within the town's budget, we needed to fund what we knew currently in place, in terms of students with disabilities, that were in out-of-district placements. So, you see the numbers here, basically from the actuals in FY17, where we had an $18 million budget, to the current budget, which is 20, to now, a $20 million budget, which is 3% increase over last year. The personnel, and this is the second year of a negotiated contract with the majority of our groups, that would be our teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, where the, this is the first year of their contract, and those are our larger groups, and next year will be the second year. And you can see that, that, you know, how our employees have worked with us through that IBB process, to find the way to really maximize the dollars that are available in terms of working with them, to make sure that, that our teachers are being supported with regard to their salary increases as well. And that was the first time that we did an IBB process, and really appreciated the efforts that everyone put into that, in order to make that, that work. And also, we, you can see that the non-personnel budget is just slightly under 3% increase. I wanted to provide just some budget highlights to you. So, our budget for personnel is basically level service on the surface. I'm going to give some caveats to that shortly. So, if everything in terms of school funding remained constant, we'd have, through our local appropriation, a level service budget, which means that the things that we have currently in our budget, the personnel that we have currently in our budget, will carry forward to next year and be funded. We didn't add any positions. The influence on that is reductions that we are projecting with regard to the Title I grant. We just received our census, and we've seen, the good news is, that, that families in our community qualifying because of the level of wages they make, put them at a certain poverty level, that has decreased over half since last year. So, we project that the funding we will receive will also show that kind of decrease. But we won't know those final numbers until this summer. And so, we're taking some action within our, our processes, our management of the district at the current time, and that action that we're taking is to freeze all hiring position, again with some caveats. And the positions that we are not recommending a freeze be put on is the superintendent's hiring. As I retire in June, it's important that you have a new superintendent, and you're going through that process. We have a primary school principal that's also retiring, and we're asking that that position definitely be filled. And a new position, after talking to Mrs. Hanscom and our principals, that we feel is an important one to put in, is the school psychologist position for the elementary primary school. Right now, we have an individual that's assisting us with that. That individual is unable to return next year, plus our high school school psychologist is also assisting as needed, and has helped fill the, the needs that we have at the primary and the elementary school. So, we do recommend that we go ahead, I think one of those positions is already posted. The primary school position, I'd like to get posted by the end of this week, and get a search committee together in order to work on that process. Mrs. Champagne has agreed to lead that effort, and being the elementary principal, I think it's important, the collaboration between the primary and the elementary is important to the district, and I know Mrs. Champagne will do an excellent job with that process, and really appreciate her giving of her time to take on another task. So, we will start reaching out to parents. We want to make sure that this is timed, so you can appoint the superintendent before this position would be important, would be appointed. And so, we were waiting for your schedule, which you have out there now, in terms of the superintendent's search, and we will lag behind that a week or two. So, those two things will happen one right after another. So, the goal for all of us is to have your superintendent and your new primary school principal appointed by the end of June. So, that's what we're all working hard, and we really encourage, I know you're still looking for people to serve on the superintendent's search committee, and we're looking forward to having people join us on the, the primary principal's search committee as well. Health insurance overall, in terms of just the new renewal rate, really is what is driving the increase of our non-personnel budget. That's over a $2 million line item. And with that, the renewal rate was 6.28, I believe, was what the overall renewal rate. But this year, we've seen some increased enrollment in our, our, our health insurance program as well. So, overall, when we put those additional enrollments into the health insurance, plus the renewal increase, the overall increase for that line, which is the largest line within the expense side of the, the budget, was 8.2%. We have been very, very pleased and excited about the Chromebook one-on-one program at the high school. We were able to put that in place when we opened the new school for grades 10, 11, and 12, and we have a plan within this budget to extend that down to the ninth grade. So, all our high school will have their individual Chromebooks, and we really feel that that was an important thing for us to do. We've worked with Mr. Maladridos, our IT director, to ensure that this is leveled out, so we can sustain it. When we put the Chromebook program in, it was important to have a plan to sustain it. Similarly, as we expand it to the ninth grade, we wanted to make sure that we had that same plan. We are using for this initial purchase, about two-thirds of the funding for that will come actually from the 40s money, which is special money that we receive based upon some of the housing developments in town. Now, in prior years, just to show how some of these things are shifting, and that was, that money was $119,000, and now, we're, our allocation for next year is expected to be right at $17,000. So, that was a substantial decrease in terms of the funds available for curriculum adoption opportunities, as well as these kinds of one-time purchases that we can get programs rolling with. But we feel that that's a very good use of those funds, and look forward to implementing that program under this, this budget. We do have within this budget some targeted professional development, some reading professional development at the primary and elementary. The high school will certainly continue to work on their NIESC, their accreditation process, and that's a big process for them this year, and will continue into next year. And of course, we've seen such exciting things happening around project-based learning and the exploratories there at the middle school, just some real excitement going on with the students, and that, and this budget continues to support those things as well. I also mentioned that there were no unanticipated out-of-district tuitions contained within this budget, and so, that's something that we will indeed want to be mindful of, and take advantage of any planning opportunities, such as increased circuit breaker funding, to ensure that there is some funding to go there if and when that happens. And it is more likely to happen than to not happen. So, we continue with the hiring freeze. The reason for that is the title, the impact of the Title I program, losing a significant amount of money, impacts personnel. And we don't want to be hiring teachers at this time of year for retirements or other openings that come up. We don't want to be hiring them only to be in a position where we may need to lay them off, because we have to shift personnel around based upon their credentiality. And so, we've talked to the principals, particularly the elementary and the primary school, which are most impacted by the loss of the Title I funds, and we have begun the discussion with staff around that as well. We won't know until July. It would be a wonderful thing if it came in at no loss of funds, but I think it would indeed be not fiscally responsible for us not to anticipate that. So, we'll look for good news, but we're planning for the worst. And that concludes our presentation, and it's time for the questions. The principals are all here. If you have particular questions about any of the individual lines, Mr. Londa, I know, is here as well. We are not, at this point in time, finally, finalizing the line item budget that's before you. We are getting closer and closer to a final rendition of that. The principals have really looked at how to take the same money they had last year, and put it where it needs to be next year with the priorities. So, when you see lines have shifted, different monies have been, the same amount of money has been allocated different ways within each one of the buildings, is how that worked. And we also have done some adjustments, just based upon some changes that have occurred this year, and I think, Mr. Cassidy, we provided you a list of those with your packets. So, questions?
You had mentioned that Representative Benson was at the FinCom meeting yesterday. I did get ahold of Senator Tran as well. He is committed to working with legislature as well, to make sure we get the full funding at 75% for the circuit breaker.
Great.
I did want to just have that put out there as well.
What did he say?
He committed to the full funding at 75%. That's the, this calculation that the superintendent was referring to, that full funding is in the 70s.
In the 70s?
Yeah.
I think, we consider full funding 78%, but I, it's 75.
But I did want to just let that be known, that Senator Tran was also on, on board, so our, our local delegation is...
I'm on board with that. Did you really think he would not be on there?
I, I asked.
Okay.
I didn't know. I asked, and, and wanted to find out what his position was.
Okay.
So, yes.
That's, the circuit breaker funds are very critical, just as the Chapter 70, in terms of the state supporting the local educational program. So, we really appreciate the legislature addressing that. Yep.
With a level funding budget regarding personnel, is the plan... With a level funding budget regarding personnel, is the plan between the primary and the elementary school in sharing of your assistant principal remaining the same? Are there any different thoughts you'd have around that, where you'll have a new principal in the primary building? I'm not sure.
I think that we just assumed that would go forward because, you know, there was, we've actually been hoping to get back to a principal and assistant principal in each building. That hasn't been able to be done, and that includes the high school. You know, that was, the high school, middle school. The middle school had put in, have a full-time assistant principal. Right now, we share an assistant principal at the high school with the middle school as well. And, you know, unfortunately, in the current budget as it stands, that wasn't possible. But I think it does remain a high priority for all the schools in order to address the, making sure that our environments are safe and secure and that the teachers are supported in their efforts and that we're able to be responsive to parents and just provide the level of service that we strive to provide every day. And we do have people stretched very thin at times, lots of hats on top of you. Thanks for asking that question.
In terms of the sixth teacher that's allotted to some of the grade levels because of the enrollment, will that, that teacher bump up? How do they...
Yes. That's one of the things that happens with this until we can stabilize. I think down at the primary school, there's an ongoing conversation because, you know, first grade was not the grade with the largest enrollment. It was very purposeful that, because first grade being first grade and with reading, that the teacher was put there. I think that conversation is still going on with the leadership team and with the teachers, with Mrs. Blaisdell. I, under the superintendent's report, was also going to ask Mrs. Blaisdell to come up and tell about kindergarten screening, and maybe this is a good time, actually, for her to do this, so that we talk about our enrollments. Mrs. Blaisdell, do you want to come announce where we're at with kindergarten registration and soon-to-be screening?
Yes. Exciting time. And unprecedented numbers of registry, registrations for our new kindergarten class coming up next year. At this time, we had 120 students so far who are registered for kindergarten next year. Like I said, this is unprecedented, that we typically have about 85 to 95 students that are registered at this time of year. We've run our registration at this time each year. I don't know whether we did a phenomenal job advertising that we were registering kindergarteners this year, or whether we can predict that we will have the additional 20 to 25 or so students that will come between now and August. So, with that said, that's a lot of students. So, we're going to need to be thinking about that and talking about the plans for that. But that being said, we have typically three days scheduled for screening, okay? And with those three days, we do six sessions of 18 students per session, trying to give both our kindergarteners an opportunity to come in and see the classrooms, to experience what they look like, to have the parents come in and have a presentation of what a typical kindergarten day looks like for their child and what they would be experiencing, having the children go through a screening process using the dial, but going into different classrooms and doing different activities in each one, so they get to see a variety of the classrooms and what they look like, because at this point, we wouldn't be able to tell them which classroom they would be placed in. The screening process, of course, is mandated by the state. We must screen our kindergarteners that are coming in. But with that, you know, our kindergarteners that we currently have have to be out of school for those three days because we just don't have the staff to be able to run our kindergarten programs and also conduct the screening, okay?
We don't have the space.
We don't have the space.
Or the staff.
Or the staff. So, we're in a dilemma. It's kind of a, it's kind of a nice challenge, but because of so many students that have registered, we're not going to be able to get that many students screened in three days. It's just, it's just not possible. So, we've been going through a number of different scenarios over the last several days since we've learned about this number being as high as it is, because we just finished the two-week screening, two-week registration process. And there's, I just don't think there's any other way to do the additional screening that needs to happen this year but to look at a fourth day, okay? The impact of that, though, I, I'm very concerned about, obviously, because that means our kindergarteners need to be out one more day of school. We looked at a variety of different possibilities. We looked at maybe taking the 13th, which is a professional development day, and for those teachers saying, you know, "We won't have professional development for you that day. We're gonna, we're gonna screen some kids." But that would really only cover 18 students and their parents if we can, in this short amount of time, pull 18 students together, put the programs together, make sure that the office has all the registration paperwork. There's a number of things that go into the screening process and this orientation period for parents. So, and we went through another, a couple of other options as far as, you know, do we cancel our screening right now and do what other towns do, which is do a registration at the very beginning of the year, start our students late, and then, you know, do our screening first two weeks of school? And there was a whole host of issues and problems that we talked about that could be caused by that. I mean, you just, when you have this kind of a screening process, an orientation process going on at this time of year, it gives parents the whole summer to be able to get their physicals done, to be able to get all of those things that are required for registration done and in our systems before a child starts. It allows the staff to be able to identify children that are having problems, you know, with being able to print or, or...
Isn't this how you make the classes?
This is how we make the classes. So, we would have, that would be a large turnaround time if we did that. If there was just a hole, I could go through, I would take up the rest of the meeting if I went through all of the different scenarios that we talked about over the last several days. So, my recommendation is that we, to minimize the impact on the kindergarteners, to not do an additional day on the, on the, we already have the second, third, and fourth days already set, but maybe go to that Monday, so that then the kids will come back from vacation. They'll have a full week of school. Then they'll have their two-day week, because we have the three days already set for our screening, and then they'll have a four-day week. So, it minimizes the amount of impact they have. You know, I brought this to you tonight because I really need to be able to inform kindergarten parents of this right away, because this is something that's, you know, unprecedented. And I think everybody will certainly understand that with these numbers, we just can't possibly get them all screened in three days.
Are we going to be able to use the extended day program during...
The extended day program is going to be offering extended day options for kids on those days. Yes. Yep.
So, do we have to approve that, or can she just go?
We just were wanting to make it, make you aware of it, see if you had other ideas that we could respond to and investigate, and really just start getting out the word. It would be important, and we didn't, we felt since the meeting was tonight, it was a nice opportunity to start getting out the word and also see if we missed something, if somebody else had an idea. But I know Mrs. Blaisdell and our staff have really worked diligently to look at a variety of scenarios and how they will work around this. The good news is, you know, lots of people responded and are signing up this year. We typically have 20 to 25 that are signing up later on, and so, if that happens, we have a different scenario.
That was my, that was my next question.
That is, right.
Is there any thought around, perhaps, I'm sure this is a thought that's occurred to you as well.
Would we need an additional teacher, assistant, classroom?
Yep. And we'll, we would have to look at budgetarily how to support that, but the sooner we know, the more we know, the better for everybody concerned.
We were shocked.
So, our plea is, for those that are watching this, if you haven't registered, if you plan to attend kindergarten in Lunenburg next fall, please make sure to get there so we can get the numbers, so we can get the screenings done, and we can make sure that our building is staffed appropriately for the number of kindergarten students that we'll have in the fall.
So, your number currently in K is 106 in your current K?
Right.
That's correct.
Right.
And you have six sections in one?
I'm sorry?
You have six sections in grade one currently?
Yes.
Currently, we do, yes.
Yep.
So, is this number larger, a larger proportion of the numbers of kids that show up on the town census at this age than what you usually get?
I don't believe that the census was showing us that there would be this many.
That there would be this many.
When, you know, when we were doing predictions and going through what those predictions were that Loxie had set up for the building process, those, those numbers weren't showing a spike here.
Showing that.
Yeah. But, you know, typically, every four to five years, we do have bubble classes that kind of run through. So, you know, in that respect, this might be one of those bubbles. All right? Thank you very much. If you have any ideas, let me know.
Mrs. Blaisdell. Since enrollment is such a big part of this budget, it seemed most appropriate to start talking about those projections for next year. The other grade levels that we had looked at, you know, are holding steady at this point in time. We had hoped to add at going into the third grade, second grade, and also, we had hoped to, we were considering a sixth grade addition as well, given the numbers. But those have been put in hold, and those numbers have remained steady or decreased slightly since the beginning of the year, too.
I just have a question about the six slots in grade eight. Does Mr. Santri plan to keep the six?
Mister eight? Eight? Do you want to talk, because you have a large group moving into seventh grade?
Yeah, what's going on there?
Good evening. Yes, I do keep, I do plan on keeping six at eighth grade. Even this week, we're growing in that number, so I believe we're at 128 now in the seventh grade.
Okay.
As I have enrollments coming in tomorrow and, I believe, Friday with new students. I think it's imperative that we've done a lot of hard work with eighth grade on preparing kids for the high school. I would like to see, keeping those numbers down with the student-staff ratio at the eighth grade. Sixth grade currently is 148. I will bump a sixth-grade teacher to seventh to have six sections there, and sixth grade will remain at five as long as the hiring freeze remains. I'm confident that team of teachers looking at past numbers with students at 125, 126. Standardized scores have remained constant with scores above state average, so I'm confident they'll be able to manage those class sizes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
But you did point out, and I want to underscore just the challenges of having teachers move from grade to grade every year. You know, part of our strategy here is beginning to try to fill in, so we don't put our teachers in that position where every year, they're changing the grade level that they're working with to manage the class sizes. The teachers don't complain about it. They step up, they do what's necessary, but there is something to be said for stability and being on the same team and working together as a team instructionally with a grade level from year to year, and that gets disrupted when you move people around.
Other questions? Any other questions from the pub? No? Okay. So, now, we're on to the public comment section, and I assume that we have many people here for public comment, but we also have a lot of things on our agenda, so we're going to maintain order and keep our discussion to 10 minutes. Or comment, yes, it's not a discussion, it is only public comment. So, yes, you come to up here. Is there paper up there?
Oh, I just ran the table there.
Oh, there's a, there's paper on the table, so if you could write your name on there when you're done. You, no? You need to write your name for our...
I'm Stephen Schaaf, a resident of Lunenburg and have been since way, way, way back for World War II. I'm a present resident at Elmwood Road. I am also a 1963 graduate of LHS. I am presently a member of the Lunenburg Athletic Hall of Fame Committee and have been chosen by them to meet with the proper school personnel, which I have done in reference to the future and the present status of the Athletic Hall of Fame. They will take upon themselves to do the proper chain of command in reference to what we have discussed, but I am here right this instance as a fellow member along with 202 other inductees in the Hall of Fame, and want you to realize that there's a lot that goes to just the thought of sports when you say LHS. And I would like to make known to you that I personally am here to represent those people. They have, some of them already been inducted and already been displayed in the old school. He started back in 2007 and had to take it down, of course, for the building of the new school and so forth. And if you would like to have personal contact with me in future discussions about the present and the future of the Hall of Fame, please contact me. Having worked in the schools before, I can be easily reached in reference to telephone or email. Thank you.
Can you put your name on there so that we have it in writing for our notes?
Excuse me?
So that we can... Can you write your name on that sign-in sheet over there?
All right.
Okay?
Sure.
That way, we can be in contact with you.
All right. Any other questions?
I think that we discussed this at a meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted to represent the 202.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, my name is Jim Broden. I'm a resident of Lunenburg. I've been here for about 25 years. I've put three kids through the school system. Two of them have graduated, both with honors, and I have a senior at school. The last time I was here was 12 years ago, when I went on to create a ski team, and the school committee approved that team, and I volunteered for 11 years and retired this year. So, I bring that up, I bring up, I'm a former president of the Lunenburg Little League. I've also worked hand-in-hand with the school system with my company, Raytheon, who, if you can remember back, I think it was after the first Red Sox championship, Terry Francona came to visit the school. A lot of the TV stations came up here. It was good publicity for the school, and I was happy to be the volunteer in between Raytheon and Lunenburg High School. I didn't realize that I would be here until maybe yesterday. That's when I found out about this story in the Pittsburgh Sentinel about my friend Scott and the Robbins family, about the jersey being removed from their fieldhouse that they volunteered, worked with the community, raised money to have that done. And I understand from reading the article and from what I heard, that the school committee does not want to have permanent memorials because they feel that maybe that that is not conducive to learning. So, while I sat here and talked to the Robbins, that they were a little bit too emotional to come up here to speak to you, perhaps, so I figured I'd give it a shot. So, I wrote down some notes, and I'd like to go through some of those. So, first and foremost, I request that the shirt be put back into A.J.'s fieldhouse, and I think that's the simple thing to do, to correct a decision that might not have been thought through and found, and has been found to be unpopular. I think you will find that. I think, I've been on committees myself, I've proposed ideas, people have called me on it. After further thought, I said, "Maybe we shouldn't have done that." A.J.'s death was a tragedy that came to this town a few years ago. My son knew him, my nephew knew him, both my family, my brother's family, I saw the impact amongst all the kids, many of which are here tonight. The town... The town came together to honor him by donating time and money to create a memorial in a football fieldhouse, I wrote locker room, dedicated to him and to future football players. I've, I think I already said this, but apparently the school committee decided that permanent memorials on school property are not conducive to learning or something similar to that. I don't believe that the school committee had a problem when the funds were being raised. We knew that this building was going to be constructed, and I don't think it's unreasonable to think that the Robbins family, the friends in the community, would be opposed to having a simple memorial as a shirt in that fieldhouse. When it comes to the conduciveness to learning, it's not in a high-traffic area, it's not in the middle of the high school, it's not, kids change classes, and then they, they see the memorial seven times a day. It's primarily in the fieldhouse, football players will see it, past football players can see it, and future football players can see it. So I think there's a little bit of a limit there of how noticeable it is. I think that the school committee would probably have it in its power to make an exception to allow this to happen, and then I think this problem goes right away. There's already a permanent memorial for Kevin Sozik, the Kevin's Gate, I believe it's called, that's the entrance to the football field that sits out there, that's been permanent. I, I think if the school committee does not allow an exception, then I suspect that the issue's not over. There's probably going to be something in the paper. Seems like we have a few cameras here today. I think as members of the community find out about this, they'll organize, gather town support, and try to overturn the ruling. So I think it's in your best interest just to take care of it right now. The school committee may not realize the impact of volunteerism provided by the community, so this, this touches on an issue that's really bigger than, than A.J. and the fieldhouse. A lot of these kids play many sports, and I know, being a member of the Little League, we took care of the softball field, we took care of some other fields. The high school baseball field has new dugouts, the softball field has new dugouts. Those just appeared out of nowhere. Many people in this room know where they came from. And I think volunteerism could be impacted, and I think it's a good show of faith to allow this to happen, which would reinforce that you support the volunteerism of Lunenburg. So I, I think you would do yourselves a favor to allow this small memorial to remain in place. You learn the respect of the town and save yourself some bad publicity, avoid future efforts by the town to right this wrong, and then you'll be able to know that you listened to us when maybe you drift a little bit away from what we feel the, the real agenda is. I saw in the paper that the school committee consulted grief experts. Me personally, I say that the Robbins family, the students that are behind me, and the people of Lunenburg are the grief experts in this case. So I wish you to reconsider your decision. Thank you.
My name is Julie Goodwin. I'm a resident of Lunenburg. I have been my whole life. I have one child that's in the school system right now, and one that's eager to enter kindergarten in the fall. As Mrs. Combs had mentioned, we have an ethical and moral obligation to the students in this town. I feel the fieldhouse, including the jersey on the wall, is part of their grieving process. Just today, my niece, who's a senior at the high school, mentioned that the removal of the jersey made her sad. I feel the way it was removed was not only insensitive to the Robbins family, but was also insensitive to the grieving students. I feel it sets a bad example for the town. I'd really like the committee to reconsider its policy and allow this jersey to remain on the wall for future students to see, and it does offer comfort to them whether we as adults see that or not.
Do we have any other public comments?
My name's Ashley Blatt. I'm a senior at the high school, and I walk by the fieldhouse every day when I go into school, and every day as I go to practice, and every single football game I went to this year, I walked by that fieldhouse. And I don't think that it's fair that people who really aren't part of the grieving process are deciding what is best for the students and for A.J.'s family during the grieving process. A lot of people are really upset about the fact that the jersey was taken down. It really, like, it meant a lot to us, even though it seems like a small thing, it was really big and really important that the fieldhouse be put up in the first place. It was a really big deal, and it took a lot of efforts and a, and a lot of support from the town to go up in the first place. And the fact that his jersey was taken down without anyone knowing and without really consulting anyone was, just felt really disrespectful and really not fair to a lot of us.
I think we have time for one more comment. Does anyone else have a comment? Okay, so it's now time for the chair's report, and I just wanted to...
There was public comment from...
Oh, yeah, you have public comment.
Yeah, I have public comment.
I apologize, Jim, I'm sorry.
No, just, just a couple of things for the, on Friday, the 13th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Boys and, the Boys and Girls Club is holding their, their sixth annual Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader event at the high school, and they would welcome everybody to be there. I had an opportunity to, to witness the Alistre Drill on Monday at the high school, middle high school. I, I thought that went very well. I look forward to hearing the full debriefing at some point, but the students that I saw acted very responsibly and were, were very, unlike what I heard happen at some other schools. So they were, they were very respectful of what had happened, of the, of the drill.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the chair's report, I just wanted to make a mention that the committee that sits up here is a volunteer committee. We all are volunteers. We've all volunteered for other organizations. I was the PTO president, Wendy was the PTO president, Meredith sits on the PTO. Jim, you are a volunteer in the Boys and Girls Club and on the Conservation Commission as well.
Architecture Preservation.
Architecture and Preservation Commission. Our newly appointed is a volunteer, and Eliza is a volunteer, a student volunteer, but she is a volunteer. We are all volunteers. No decision was made in regard to our policy yet, it hasn't even been approved. We did not know that it was taken down as a committee. We did not order it taken down. We did not vote on it to be taken down.
Who took it down?
We have no idea who took it down.
Well, there's only so many keys.
Why did they investigate it?
No, no, that's a random...
Okay, this is not a discussion.
Why did you just pull it up?
This is my, this is my chair's report.
Help us, help us make everyone...
We are, we're, we're talking about a policy in, at the end, third reading of the policy. We've had policy subcommittee meeting November 9th, a policy subcommittee meeting December 7th, a policy subcommittee meeting on, oh wait, we had an email to Mr. Iainachi of the foundation requesting input on our policy. We received an email from Mr. Iainachi on the 22nd with recommendations for the policy, and we had a policy subcommittee meeting on the 27th, 22nd of January, and incorporated Mr. Iainachi's recommendations into the policy. We then forwarded the policy to the school committee for the first public reading on February 14th. The superintendent sent it in her updates on February 27th and requested input with an end date of March 31st. The school committee had its second public reading on March 7th. Superintendent Combs indicated that she had not received any input from the public in regards to these policies. So then we were informed that the jersey had been taken down on the 2nd. We had a policy subcommittee meeting at that time on Monday. I believe Mr. Robbins came to the school, but he did not attend our policy subcommittee meeting. And now we are here on the 4th for our scheduled final reading of the policy.
Does that mean you would consider keeping...
We do, we, I, we are looking at the policy, there's, we are not having a discussion right now about the policy, that is later in the agenda, we have other agenda...
And it's a reading and it's not a discussion.
It's a reading, and it's not a discussion. We do not have to approve it at this meeting.
But we can.
We can, but we do not have to.
So what, what does that mean? You're just going to read it to us?
It means that nothing's going to be done as you...
It means we're doing a reading today, that, it means that it could possibly be approved.
So, and if the jersey is allowed back up until a decision is made?
Well, not exactly, because we had meetings with Mr. Iainachi, where is, Mr., we're not having a discussion, but I'm going to go over the timelines again. Mr. Iainachi...
He doesn't seem aware of this because...
Mr. Iainachi was the...
You're missing an opportunity.
Mr. Iainachi informed us that there was nothing on the wall except for TVs and whiteboards at our meeting with Mr. Iainachi in August of 20, the 23rd, 2017. We had a meeting at that time, and we recapped that no indoor signage would be placed, the Wall of Remembrance would be constructed but is awaiting policy for names, and a plaque with donors' names would be placed on the exterior of the building. We are still waiting, I'm sure, for the donors' names to be placed on the exterior of the building. We are making this policy regarding memorials for the Wall of Remembrance, and there should be no indoor signage in the building. Mr. Iainachi was at that meeting and agreed to these things with us. He was the spokesperson for this foundation that the school committee worked with throughout the process.
So I suggest to you...
Continue to work with him.
Yes, we still continue to work with him.
Continue to work.
We'll, we'll find him. Tell him what we think. We'd like to have this shirt put up, the way it was, permanently, and like any good democratic process, if we don't get our way, we'll try again.
Bill, we'll be trying to make it here, we're working.
But we could, we could avoid all of that by, I believe that you would, your group has the power to do that and make it right, and a lot of people in town will be impressed that you made something right after seeing the town meeting process. That's my opinion.
Okay. But now we're going to move to, we have warrants on the table to approve, and this, and we have minutes on the table to approve, March 21st, regular session minutes. Did you guys take a look at those?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
No changes.
No changes? I'll take a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve meeting minutes and warrants as presented this evening.
Just warrants, just warrants.
Our warrants this evening, motion to approve warrants.
No minutes, 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 we signed the warrants.
That's what I said, motion to approve our minute.
Yeah.
Motion to approve our minutes.
I'll second the motion to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So superintendent, do you have a report for us, or just for the budget?
I have line item transfers that...
Oh, are they on there?
Were they off there?
They're not on there.
I know I sent them, I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Londa, and I met on Monday, and Mr. Londa has requested some movement of some revenue that are in current lines, the bulk of which was natural gas, because that, that line has some available funds, and he is suggesting moving them to a maintenance of building contract, as well as custodial supplies for the system and repair of the equipment. So overall, the amount requested to be reallocated out of various lines, there's a range of over $10,000 to $61. This is a process that we go through at this time of year as we start to close out the budget. So that total amount that we're wanting to transfer is in the amount of $27,583. The bulk of that will go, $25,193 of that will go into maintenance of building contract, and what will be done with those is, we have a very expensive elevator repair that's underway over at Turkey Hill Elementary School. We've had to move a classroom downstairs in order to accommodate a student that would be utilizing that elevator, but unfortunately it's broken, and it appears that it will be a substantial repair. Mr. Londa, do you want to brief the committee on that piece, please?
Yeah, so in this request for the line item transfer, the maintenance of building contract does, does a lot of different things for us, but one of the, one of the heavy expenses we face across the entire year is elevator repairs, because we have, you know, services on the elevators themselves that they get taken care of, we have inspections that are, you know, required by the state, there are annual inspections on, on many of the lifts, but not all of them. And then, and then we do have, you know, occasionally you have to have service calls for broken, something that would break. And we've had two things this year that were, were substantial. One of them was, was in the middle school, high school, we had a door card that, that failed during the state inspection, which was a very expensive repair, about $9,000. And then we have the repair that we're doing, going to be doing now, which I'm not, at this point, I'm not really sure what the total cost will be. I know that the hourly cost is $450 an hour for a elevator maintenance team, and they're going to be replacing a, a cable, a cable bundle that travels up and down with the lift, and, and so it'll be mostly labor plus the cost of, of the cabling. And we haven't quite had the, the cost of the materials yet identified, but they're trying to get, get us the, the cost and when they'll have that cable available so that that lift can be back in the service. So the, the transfer is to set the stage for us to go ahead and do all these repairs, but also, you know, also looking for funds to fund, an architect to help us develop specifications for, for our project for this summer. So there's some of that involved in this as well. And the lines that the funds are coming out of, the natural gas line, you know, at this point, you know, we're through the worst of it, I think, as far as the winter goes, and we are seeing that, you know, natural gas costs and our costs are going to be, allow this transfer to go forward without any issues. We also are, you know, in our FY '19 budget, are projecting reduced costs for natural gas for next year as well. So, like I said, that, that's why we see that one, and so we're just trying to get the right balance between maintenance of building supply and maintenance of building contract, and make sure that we have funds in all the lines that we, we do need to be able to get through the end of the year.
So I recommend approval of that, of the second page, just for the school committee's signature.
Yep, now it's your report.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to recognize the paraprofessionals. Today is Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, and we certainly appreciate all that the paraprofessionals in our districts do every day to support our students and provide a support to our teachers in supporting our students. It's a, they play a vital role in the successful operation of our school district. Their job performance of paraprofessionals is essential to the education of our, our children. They are dedicated and valuable in their contributions, and all of the fine people who fill these important positions are integral to our successful daily operation of our public school. The members of the Lunenburg School Committee, I ask you to recognize the paraprofessionals' continued contributions to the efficient operation of the Lunenburg Public School District, and we ask you to declare today Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, if you would. So we have a proclamation that...
Do I have to read that?
Well, you don't have to, I just did it for you.
Oh, okay, good.
And you could entertain a vote.
A vote?
Authorizing you to sign the proclamation.
Yes, I'll take a motion to vote.
I move for you to be able to sign that.
Yeah, right.
Recognize our paraprofessionals.
Okay. Second, I need a second. I'll second that. Thank you.
I also wanted to let you know, I heard back from Mrs. Garen and the students that attended the conference at the Cape.
They're going to come.
Student council members will be with us at the last meeting in April and provide a report at that time as well, so we look forward to them being there. And I think that's my, all I have to report tonight.
So then we are on to our student representatives' report. Ms. Eliza?
Hi. I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible, I don't have a ton to report. This Friday concludes the third term, and then we have... this Friday concludes the third term, and then we have this April break quickly approaching, the following Friday, spring sports kicked off last week, although their seasons haven't really officially started because there've been a lot of game delays due to weather, hopefully by the end of this week or the beginning of next week, the seasons will actually begin, the student council has concluded their Make-A-Wish project, which has taken place over the course of the past few weeks, and we raised over a thousand dollars, which is really exciting, so that will be donated to Make-A-Wish, and then we are working on getting microwaves in the cafeteria still, it's just kind of a long process, but that's continuing, and then lastly, the freshman class is gonna be hosting a Class Olympics this Friday, so I'm just encouraging all classes to get involved and come out for that, that's all, thank you.
Three dollars a ticket?
Uh, yeah, three dollars.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we are, new business is the trip to Italy in twenty nineteen proposal, Ms. York.
I was here to review that, thank you, Ms. Gillip for being here.
Thank you, so I am proposing a trip to Italy, which would be basically Venice, Florence, and Rome with a few stops on the way between, for April vacation of twenty nineteen, it's a nine-day trip, we would probably, it always depends on when they finalize the plans with the travel company, but probably need to leave on a Thursday evening, they usually try to do a weeknight departure to avoid a little surcharge in the weekend, and then we would return on the following Friday, the nineteenth, so the students would need to miss just one day of school, that was the way that the plan worked out, but other than that, it's over April vacation. The tour company is ACIS, who a number of us have worked with before, we work with a, well, their office out of Boston, and that's who I've been working with, and the cost of the trip is three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars if students register with a two hundred dollar deposit by May first, it goes up after that, I tried really hard to keep it under four thousand, 'cause I know they're not cheap, I think that's kind of the basics of it, and we're looking at opening it to any student at the high school for this trip, because there's been a lot of, the trips have sort of, you know, kind of fallen each year, and sometimes kids can't go on one, so we're trying to see if maybe, I think it would be primarily for Latin students that would be interested, but I've been talking with my department head, and since other students have been allowed to go on some of the France and Spain trips, we're gonna probably open it up to anyone that's interested, if that works, so I think that's the basics, does any questions?
Just a question about the timing of around April vacation, usually there's spring sports, so are you going to make arrangements with athletic director so that if a student wants to actually attend this?
So we always, we definitely try, I know in the past, there have been some sports that will just tell the students, then unfortunately, it's, it's, something's not gonna work for them, and they have to make the decision, but I'll definitely talk to them about it.
Okay.
The trips that I've done have pretty much always been in April, so students have managed to go.
I looked at that in policy, that's something that we had discussed in policy, just around a, a school-based trip and something like that, I don't know if that's worth review again, just to see how it is, only because it's something I.
I think it's a deterrent.
We reviewed that section of policy earlier, so.
And I think it's a deterrent for some students to actually go on this.
Absolutely.
February would be another, there'd be different sports in February, so.
Yeah, well, that's why I think they started doing that at the end of the year.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, I know the trip that's going out in twenty nineteen is in June.
Yeah, and that's why, right?
The trips are a little more expensive, I will say, I don't know about the cost of that one, but I know when I've looked into the trips, it's pricier in June, so I'm just trying to keep it down, the cost down for the students, but.
Yeah, okay.
I think we do have so many students that are involved in so many different things that, you know, in order to avoid the conflict, because there's an impact on the team, obviously, if players are absent as well, so some consideration around the differential of the cost, perhaps, if, if it were moved to June, would you be able to look at that as we move forward? This approval would only be for initial approval of the trip and start to get some ideas, and I think it would be a good time to really look at the, a later trip that could avoid some of the conflicts that create this and keep everybody whole moving forward, so if you would do that, I certainly recommend, I know Mr. Aspada Fino has recommended the initial approval of this trip, by giving initial approval, it allows Mrs. York to start discussing this with students, finding out how much interest there is, look into what that June, the increased cost, what, how that may impact it, and then come back, and we can still consider policy around that as well.
Okay, so. I just think the May first date is on here, that she has the date.
Right, that's what I was, that's what I was gonna ask.
So it's gotta be a really fast turnaround.
Yeah, yeah, so if, if I needed to move it, I would need to contact the company and find out the price difference, and then are there any incentives and what the dates would shift to?
Right.
So I guess I just need to ask if I'm, if it's okay to move forward with a meeting with parents, then, I guess that's where we're at.
That's what I would recommend, and continue to, to look at the other, because it would move later, is what it would move.
Right, right.
So they already know that they could be into it, I'm sure these companies are going to work with you, they want to run a trip, and so let's see what we can manage in terms of talking to them, do you feel that you could do that?
Yeah, yeah, so if I could have a meeting, then, with what I've got, and then if it looked like it was an issue for parents.
With a possible change?
Right, and the dates, I mean, the dates are always, like I said, tentative anyways, depending on when they booked the flights, even, even if it was April, it could shift a day or two regardless, so.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to.
You, you would need initial approval for Mrs. York to be able to start talking to parents and students, yes.
I'll make a motion for the initial approval of the trip to Italy in twenty nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I can still wait to Florence with you.
We have a donation?
We have several donations, absolutely, we have several donations, we have a donation, and I have the thank you for it, but the donation from the Association of Professional Administrators at Fitchburg State University, and they would like, again this year, to donate four hundred dollars, and that, they would like to designate that donation for the bus to transport the Lunenburg students to the Special Olympics on April twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, and so that is one of the donations, I'll do them all, and we can do one general acceptance, I think, the schools, we've seen, received several Hannaford Help checks, and I wanted to acknowledge a check in the amount of two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars from Hannaford Helps, and that was for Lunenburg High School, for the Lunenburg Primary, there was a check in the amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, and that was the primary school, and unfortunately, they, Hannaford Helps hasn't caught up with our new configuration, we feel that that's been corrected now, but Turkey Hill Middle School has received a check for one thousand two hundred and forty-eight, I suspect that people didn't donate as much to Turkey Hill Middle School, because they know that we don't have a Turkey Hill Middle School, and so we're going to work how this will be distributed between the elementary and the middle school.
Okay.
Is what we'll do, and I believe I heard from the office at the middle school today that we have confirmation that Hannaford, we're all in line with the four schools being present in Lunenburg now, but we do appreciate the parent supports around those programs, and wanted to acknowledge those donations as well, and that's all the donations.
We'll accept all those days donations with gratitude, right?
Yes.
Yep, okay, oh, we have to review, approve, and sign the consultant contract with the MASC, are, you're not presenting, are you, Mr. Cassidy?
Mr. Cassidy, or do you?
No, it's just for, you just, it's your, did you review this?
Yes.
I have to, I need a motion that I can sign this document.
I move that you can sign this document, I, I reviewed it, I didn't have any questions or changes.
Okay.
Did anybody else?
What you have in, in front of you is a standard consultant contract for Massachusetts Association of School Committees, it's a low-risk contract, it's really identifying the payment plan for the, for the consulting services, the purchase order has already been approved, this is really just delineating phases in payments, as far as I can see. What I would recommend is that the committee approves the chairperson to sign off on the agreement, and we can move it forward to the contractor.
Okay, so I just need a formal motion.
I move that we allow the chair to sign the MASC search service contract for, for the school committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is this the copy I can sign, how many copies do I need to sign? Thank you.
You've got three.
Okay. Oh, the superintendent survey provided by the MASC, did you guys have time to look at that?
I did not look at it.
I looked at, I looked at it, it was.
Standard.
It looked pretty standard, there were, I didn't really see anything that jumped out at me, I'm trying to remember specifics, though.
Do you think that we need to send that out? What were your thoughts on that?
Would it provide any feedback that we've already received from like that public?
I, no, I think we got, I think we had a lot of feedback on that meeting, it was, I think we covered most of the stake, most if not all the stakeholders in that, in that public meeting that we had.
I agree.
Catch a few that we didn't get?
Does it delay, does it affect our timing of our?
I don't think the time, it does anything, I don't think it will affect anything if we send it out, it's, we don't even have a screening committee right now, if we send it out now, and then get the feedback for the screening committee?
That's what I was gonna say, the sooner we can get feedback, then.
Then.
Now, if I recall correctly, the survey did include, there was like a generic question at the end.
What was it?
That would need to be, it's more specialized for our specific search criteria that we're looking for.
Oh.
Right, it was, it was a very general, let me see if I can find this, that document.
Should we work on that?
Do we need to, and what were we looking for, we wanted a present, a figure that was present, right, the one that?
That was our top.
That was our top, but was that what we were looking for that was like specific to our community, correct?
I'm, I'm pulling it up right now, sorry, I didn't memorize it, nor did I print it out.
You sure?
So it listed, select five of the most significant current or future issues that the new superintendent will need to address, five skills or abilities, and then how important is it for you to have working knowledge of X?
X?
X, so, you know, that's the one where I think we would need to spend some time, that's the generic question, what is, what is this X, and how many Xs are we going to ask about, working knowledge of budgeting is, is one that the, I know came up.
Oh, yeah.
You know, working knowledge of.
Grant writing.
Grant writing, working knowledge, so I think we, if we're going to send out the, the survey, we need to spend some time thinking about what those Xs need to be filled in as.
Is that something we could work on within a document with each other, no?
Uh-uh.
No.
Nope, we'd have to have a discussion now or our next meeting, and at our next meeting, we're also appointing our school, our search, our screening committee, screening committee.
Screening committee, yeah.
So I'm not sure, considering the public meeting that we did have and the input that we did receive from the various stakeholders, I'm not sure that this will add us any additional information to help us in selecting the candidate, I think the search committee is going to be doing some of that, and this, maybe some of the things that the search committee needs to define.
Correct, and then we could send it out after, the screening committee, screening.
The screening committees, that's our, yes, the screening committee, if they needed more information.
Right, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on that.
Some of it may require a lot of delineation if we're, you know, if, if we worked, you know, even the, the.
Oh, yeah, this is just.
The committee worked to redefine it, then it's still, then you're looking at candidates as a whole, and you're trying to vet them from there, so in some ways, it might make things too challenging and looking, because you're, you know, we are, we put out two candidates, our list of, of requirements, so to speak, and then.
The big ones.
The big ones, right, so I'm wondering if it would get confusing for us if we're trying to look at every question and how candidates line up with each of those.
Well, and I think this is, I, I think the purpose of this is to help the search committee.
Vet those.
Identify what is important to the community or to what, to the various schools, I think we got that.
So too.
In very detailed notes from, from that, that meeting, so I don't know, I, it may be redundant, is what I'm, what I'm suggesting, but.
But then we also have to have someone go through.
We let the search committee determine whether or not.
The screening.
The screening, sorry, I keep saying search, sorry, screening committee, have them determine whether or not it's.
It's gonna be fruitful.
Because I think that would probably be part of the orientation that MASC would provide, because it wasn't that part of that section.
At the April thirtieth meeting, you mean?
Yep, after, yeah, the April thirtieth.
At the April thirtieth meeting, yeah, so maybe.
Bring it up on there.
All right.
I mean, maybe we can, in the meantime, think of whatever inputs we might want to add to that.
They're gonna have a question development meeting, and it could be a part of that, or are, maybe it's part of what they would want to know before their question development.
Because there's a handful of days in between those two meetings, so if something, you know, were crafted immediately after, sent out, you know, with a quick turnaround and whatever information was able to be gathered is considered, you know.
Right.
We get what we get.
Right.
Because the thirtieth meeting is, is a public thing, so maybe we think about, at least we think individually about things that we might want to see, and then bring it up at that meeting.
Yes.
If there's anything specific that the screening committee would like to see.
The screening.
I will put it on the back of my nameplate.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna hold off on that?
I, I think so, well, that would be my, my recommendation.
Okay, well, I have to reply to that MASC rep, Dorothy, so I'm gonna just tell her we're gonna hold off on that?
Until the screening committee.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think that makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it refers to the search committee on here, so that's.
I know, I'm sorry, that's what they call it.
That's what's confusing, that was.
They're calling it a search committee, right?
And we're calling it a screening, right, so, so, there's, you know, in a draft form, it does need to morgue.
Okay, okay, so now on it, our old business is the third reading of the policies.
Are we doing pros and cons?
Oh, oh, you know what, I crossed that off, I'm so sorry, I crossed that off because we're just not going to do that, she, I spoke with the MASC rep, and she did not think the timing of our search, this would be fruitful at all, it would, she thought it wouldn't really add anything to our search other than costing us more money, so.
And I think that when we met last time.
Yeah.
You seemed to indicate that it was, you're getting, you're getting the same quality hits from the website than you would be if you mailed something out.
Yeah, so.
So.
We're just not gonna do it.
Seems like a waste of money.
Yeah, it was a lot of money as well.
That's true.
It wasn't just hundreds of dollars.
It's not included in our, in our fee that we pay to the consultant.
Yeah, yeah.
And for color, with the logos.
Yeah, it would look beautiful, I'd love to have a hard copy, but no, okay, so on to the third reading of the policy, naming of facilities, spaces, and memorials, I think that the best course forward is to go back to the subcommittee with this, and take further comments from this group at a policy subcommittee meeting, to incorporate what you would like to see moving forward, and to have a discussion there, because that's the place for discussion around policies, is the policy subcommittee meeting, so if we, if we, we need to make a policy in regards to this, moving forward because of other things that may happen going forward, we did not have policy around anything like this, so policy has to be created going forward, and the place to discuss these things is at a policy subcommittee meeting, so what we will do is, we will not be voting on this right now at this time, we will take it back to a policy subcommittee meeting, where we would hope that you would be in attendance. We will take it back to a policy subcommittee meeting where we would hope that you would be in attendance.
Well, and how do we find this information? Because a lot of people seem to have a hard time finding, is this agenda meeting?
It's...oh, it's posted.
I know.
It's posted on the town website.
Yes, right?
Yeah.
The plan said it was difficult to find, even though...
Oh, okay. And we have a school committee calendar up on the school website. In the school committee section, there's a school committee section right there.
As we said, we've been working closely with Mr. Iannacci.
With Mr. Iannacci.
You know, we...
Oh, Mr. Iannacci. I didn't notice you back there. But this is not a discussion time. So this is, like I said, we're gonna go back to policy subcommittee where Mr. Iannacci's welcome to join us as well.
I will.
Okay? Because, Mr. Iannacci, you know, oh, well, I brought it up earlier that you had provided input into the policy.
We had to talk to the section you said.
Well, I'm talking. I'm telling him, recapping what he was not here for.
Yes.
Okay?
I brought lots of information, but that's why I'm here.
Right.
So I wanted to address anything with the facts of the group.
No, I was bringing up the fact that we worked on policy and we asked you for input.
Loxie asked me to review policies that had nothing to do with specific shirts or field houses. I made recommendations. There was words in there that said the school committee could vote to remove the name of a building, and I recommended that would not be a good thing. I gave an example relative to Kevin's gate. If you remember, the email, I still have it in there. I'm very unwilling to go to any subcommittee meeting. You've now got my attention. Thank you all for letting me know I needed to have my attention. I poured my life out for this project. This project was supposed to be something that brought everyone together. I can't tell you the hours. I can't tell you how much I had to bend over backwards in a lot of ways. And I had other meetings that weren't televised and listened to accusations.
This is public comment.
Okay? So this doesn't have to be this way. It didn't have to be this way. But I was thanked you informed as to what was being done and said about me and about this project by someone who I thought...
I'm reading notes, Bill.
Okay. Everyone else is wrong, and you're right.
I'm reading minutes.
Okay, and I'll leave you three minutes back, and I'll tell you exactly what happened every step of the way. And I'll tell you that when I was asked if things were on the wall, there wasn't any on the wall. Loxie knows.
Yeah, we have that in our minutes.
Loxie knows what happened. I told Loxie what happened. When the...and Scott knows, too, I'm not telling any secrets here. Scott hung both shirts. Loxie walked into the field house. You asked me. You thought I hung them. I said it was hung by the father, my exact words. Okay? So the conversation was between there for that.
That's not the conversation. The...we continue to go back to the policy. There was no question about whether the shirts was hung or not. We continue to develop this policy, just like we're trying to get the memorial wall. The memorial wall has changed very much since we started working on this policy.
And I also recommended that that policy, I recommended strongly that that policy be done nine months before we even did the building.
This is that policy.
I knew...no, no, you said the wall.
This is the policy.
Okay.
That...this is all policy related to all of these aspects of the...
So I am now fully engaged and will fully participate in the subcommittee meeting. I've had ideas, I've had stuff from the start where I told you for the wall of remembrance, which was another give on my part because to me, that was one of the biggest parts of it of the project, and there was a major give on my part on that. So now you'll have me fully engaged. It's gotta be something that's supported around my travel if you want me fully engaged, okay? So I'll be there, I'll be at every meeting, I'll be at every word that's said. We'll write everything down, we won't trust each other, and we'll just make sure that everything is like this instead of sharing and open and trying hard to work together. This project was supposed to be good, was supposed to be goodness. I sacrificed a large part of my life, my family's life, to do this while still working at a job that is very demanding. And I did it for the town, I did it for the kids. This just further emphasizes to me why I like kids so much more than adults, okay? And it's true. I did it for the kids. It's a great facility that should bring so much to so many people, and it's turned into a pawn in a game, not just here, even in the school. Who can use it when, who can't use it? The fact that I had to open it so the field hockey team could use it one night? I mean, this is ridiculous. This is a beautiful, wonderful thing, okay? And not everyone loves every aspect of the project, on both sides. My whole...the whole journey that I had in doing this was making not people happy on both sides to try to get us here. Because what usually happens is if you go one way or the other, you don't get the end result. We got the end result. We got a beautiful facility for our kids to use, the students, they care less about anyone else, for the students to use. Let's use it, let's be happy. Let's also use common sense in what we do. And let's get more involvement, let's be there, and let's say what we, the town, feel should be done to the school. Because someone made a comment. I saw some of this after I started getting some texts. Somebody made a comment early, and I had switched away, I think it was you. We are the best grief counselors here, so let's get the town after that. The kids at the school, the parents, come forward, everyone, not just this. We should have thousands of people get together and say, what do we want to do? We have a great teaching lesson on the thing. We didn't just make it an AJ thing, right? We did it for the kids, we put a message there, we put a message on the front of the building because we love our kids and we want our kids not to be like us and realize that we're not indestructible when we're young, that things can happen, right? We all think we're indestructible when they're young, some of the kids in here probably still think they are. We're not. So we have that beautiful message. We have the beautiful ability for a wall of remembrance. There's nothing wrong with doing it as it was supposed to be, the wall of remembrance. So let's open it all up then. Let's open all of it up, and let's have a conversation, and disagreement is good. Disagreement gets to better, okay?
Bill, I wish you could have been at the policy subcommittee where we sat down with... I think some of the public may have heard, the three parents who had also lost childrens, and were talking about, you know, how that wall would really come together and what it would mean. And we went through that, and there are so many aspects of that that I don't know that everybody in this room has thought about. They certainly weren't aspects that I had thought about until we sat down and talked with those folks. So I would agree, a very open participatory process, a very respectful conversation around this. Loss is hard, the loss of a child, there's nothing more devastating for us. And this was to bring everyone together. This was to be a field house for all our athletes and others. I remember your initial concept around this, Bill, was it was for student activities as well. It was to be an asset for everyone. It wasn't to belong to one team or one season or one spot. That's not why it was built. It was built for everyone, right, Bill? That was the concept.
No, it was. And also, my biggest premise was, if you remember, and I used it a lot, the word "love." Love, not as a stupid, mushy childhood thing, love as in it was supposed to bring love to the community. There was a healing that needed to happen, and it still needs to happen.
And you've carried this since the beginning. You have been the one doing the work.
And I wanted to.
And it'll be good if other people come up and participate with this because you have had it on your shoulders.
But please don't twist my word. I tell you right now, I am one of the most sincerest people you will ever meet. I have my flaws, but I promise you, my intention is always good. And I know I have flaws, but I try to work on those. My intention here is pure and simple, and it was for everyone, and it was for goodness, and that's that. That's it. There was no evil, there was no trying to play this person against the other or tell this person nothing was on a wall and then something was on a wall. There wasn't anything on the wall.
That's all I said.
There wasn't anything on the wall, and then there was. And you and I know, we talked that night, that same night.
Mrs. Soroka is the one that asked me about that, and we went in.
So you and I talked, you went in and we talked.
Right.
Okay? I had to be the bearer of bad news for the locker, and I felt that if anyone wanted to take issue with the simple jersey hanging on the wall, that that was a conversation that should have been had with Scott and Powell. Scott hung the shirt.
And we...and you had felt at that time with regard to the locker that you should be the one having that conversation, right?
And I did it.
Yeah.
Because you talked to people face to face, direct, and you worked things out. You can't have this person over here saying this, this person over here saying this, and this person over here saying this. People get together face to face and have the courage to disagree.
So once again, it'll be good for all of us to be together.
Disagree.
All of us to be together, all of us to be together.
Agree.
For the conversation.
So you've got my full attention, again, and, you know, I'm more than happy to be involved in things, but last year was a lot, a lot of hours, okay? There was help, but there was a lot, a lot of hours, okay?
Right, for us all.
Is there a date already set for that next subcommittee meeting?
We don't have that.
Not yet.
No, we can make that.
Okay. So and then on the website, it's under, it's on the Lunenburg Schools School Committee, and then they can find the subcommittees on there.
Yep, and it goes...we'll be sure to include it in the superintendent's update. I will send it to Bill, I can send it to Mr. Robbins.
It's posted on hard copy in Town Hall as well.
We're happy to send you the invite. It's very public.
Goes up 48 hours before.
That's it?
Yeah. That's all town meetings.
That's all town meetings. That's a hard copy.
Well, that's the agenda, right?
That's the agenda, yes. Oh, okay, yeah, we can set that meeting, that date, and the agenda goes up. But we can make sure that you are aware of the date prior to that two days. That's just...yeah.
Can we just set the date now?
And it'll be helpful because...
Hold the date, we can set it down.
Start the work. Why, because wait, we're here, we're all here now.
Is the date a secret from everybody?
It gives people more than 48 hours to make plans. Some of us, like, are busy.
I know, I'm extremely busy as well.
We're all extremely busy, though, obviously, you know, it's like, obviously now there's...
Usually we do this on Monday nights.
We should do it before we get into the heat of superintendent committee because we have a lot of those Monday nights are already gone.
So there's a PTO meeting next Monday, I believe.
I'm not gonna be around.
And you're not gonna be. Two weeks.
That's school break.
And then I have confirmation.
The 23rd is out for both her and I.
You being gone on school break, so that's not an option that we can do.
I can do school break.
I can do school break 16.
We can do school break, but are you around on school break?
Yes.
Patriots Day, this Monday night, the 16th.
Because that's the day that we can all do.
Hold, 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 you go see if Bill's around.
Bill?
Can we do...can we have a meeting?
Can I also just say it's been really difficult for all of us to keep up with exactly what's happening because the school committee minutes have not been uploaded to the website since February 28th? So if somehow they could be uploaded...
They have been submitted, so please call the clerk's office because they have been submitted to be uploaded, so it might be that.
If there was someone to see exactly what's been said, so we know exactly what's been going on.
That works for Bill, right?
The 16th, yep.
Yes, it's Monday, the 16th.
Is that here?
That is usually at the high school.
High school classroom?
Yeah, no, one of the conference rooms. Nobody ever comes.
We probably won't have it, it'll probably be in the middle school.
The middle school project room, right?
School project.
I'll find it.
It's...when you go in, it's to the left, near the cafeteria.
By the calf.
Okay.
Do we have a time?
Excuse me?
Do we have a time for seven?
It's typically seven.
Six.
But, or 6:30 if you...
We do sometimes 6:30, sometimes seven.
So... They do plan it now.
Yeah.
So plan at 6:30.
Well, Bill, are you gonna be there at 6:30?
Can 6:30 work, Bill?
Do you have the day...okay.
No, I don't.
Mr. Eversol?
Just a clarification, that's a state holiday. Are we allowed to meet on that date?
I do not believe you are.
Okay. Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Bill, Tuesday?
Travel.
When are you not traveling?
Believe it or not, it's the next time I travel.
Okay, so wait, 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 what about next week? That's just not...I can't do Monday, that's the only...
Tuesday, the 13th?
No, you're looking...you're looking at a different month.
I'm thinking of a wrong month. It's 14.
We don't have a meeting on a Wednesday.
So we can do the 11th?
Can you do the 11th? Can you do the 11th Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
On Wednesday?
Yeah. I hope to be back by Wednesday, I'm... Yeah, Bill? 6:30.
6:30.
Okay.
High school.
At the high school. Go in, make a left, the big project room.
6:30?
6:30, yes, 6:30.
Got it?
Got it?
We'll get it posted.
We'll get it posted? We'll get it posted? No, well, we have other items, but you don't have to stay.
Report, we have reports.
Reports on our committees, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Last year's minutes that covered this are all in...
Bill was public comment, but you can...
There might be other public comment before that.
Yes, yes. He will, yes, yes.
We'll continue public comment.
Yes.
With other public.
Rhonda Lucia, 181...
Okay, now we're gonna have other public comments if anybody has further public comments on anything else.
Rhonda Lucia, 181 Reservoir Road.
Rhonda, you have the...
I can't hear you. We can't hear you yet.
Oh.
It's really loud back there with the squeaky floors.
Okay. Rhonda Lucia, 181 Reservoir Road. My comment is, I did attend the policy subcommittee meeting on Monday. And one of the concerns that I raised was that parents, high school parents, were not informed about the Alice Drill taking place on Monday. And I also brought up the fact that I had sought previous permission to attend and observe the drill. And while listening to the meeting tonight, I heard a member say that he was allowed to attend the drill. And one of the reasons I, when I spoke to you guys, I told you I will not push on that issue because you, the superintendent, explained to me that it was on a need-to-know basis. So my question is, why would a member of the committee be on a need-to-know basis?
Mister, I believe you had a meeting, a school council meeting?
I did have a meeting. I also checked with Mr. Santri ahead of time, and as a member of the school advisory committee for that school and a member of the school committee, he allowed me to observe.
Okay, well, I guess maybe that would be a future policy of who, define who is on a need-to-know basis. Because I really felt strongly that I wanted to attend because I feel it's my business. I feel it's my business, my daughter's safety is my business, and I want to know, I'm, I'm not just going to trust what someone else is doing when it comes to that, so, um, thank you.
Clarifying question, I, I just need to ask, are you, do you receive the emails from the high school or the middle school?
High school.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there was none.
Okay.
We, we already, we determined that.
Yeah, okay.
Last week, yes, on Monday, yeah. Do we have further public, public comment? No?
I, I would like to just thank the people who came to our meeting to discuss their concerns, that is an appropriate way to begin a dialogue. Um, I've seen other ways that are not as appropriate, but the, the people who were able to come to the meeting and express their concerns, I appreciate their time that they've given to that.
And that's just much more civil than antisocial media, yeah?
Yeah, antisocial media, yeah. Okay, we have reports, school councils, anyone have a report?
Not since last meeting.
No.
No, okay, and I did not, I was unable to attend, so...
I was unable to attend as well.
Okay. Wellness Advisory?
Wellness Advisory met this past Wednesday, and, um, a large chunk of the meeting was devoted to looking at, um, different communities that have surveys for their students, um, middle and high school age students, particularly high school age students around everything from mental health to substance abuse, in a, a completely anonymous fashion, because there are different types of, um, they just did the expert for our middle schoolers, which parents had to give permission for, um, but, um, they're not sure that kids are honest in a survey where they're face to face with someone and something's verbal. So, looking at how do we create, um, a town on the South Shore, I don't, I don't, I didn't write down who it was, um, Cohasset me, Cohasset somewhere in that area, they had a really great survey that they put online, so we were looking...
I'm just going to tell you something, I had a comment about the surveys, and my daughter says that they're not, they're not fully, um, they don't really like answering the surveys, because their names are attached to the surveys.
And that's, that's exactly what this discussion was regarding.
So, they're not going to be honest on the surveys either.
And that's, that's exactly the feedback that was given, was that if we want to learn how our kids are doing really, in a variety of ways, that the anonymity is key for them.
It is essential.
Especially since, you know...
How honest would any of us be?
Well, and...
As adults even, I mean, I don't like to take a survey like that, if I'm attached to it.
And when this was face to face, they even discussed at the moment, our two healthcare professionals in the building have great links to the students that are there, so even more, you know, even more of a step closer. Um, so, um, looking at how to create something with some, with some anonymity, as well as, um, different types of questions. Yes, no questions often will get a no, because kids still might be concerned, does somebody recognize this? So, how can you ask a different type of question with different answers that might, kids might be more willing to, you know, look at multiple choices of answers, things like that, just, just to look at potentially getting more information than we are currently getting.
We looked at Survey Monkey, and so...
Oh, yeah, they were looking at Survey Monkey, so, but looking at the question, the types of questions that this particular school district had, and the way they worded them, and more than, more than yes or no, different, you know, about not, have you ever tried marijuana, yes or no? But, what do you think of in giving some answers? That was the type of answers that this survey had.
There's a science to building surveys.
Oh, absolutely.
So, it, so, um, two advisory members were working together on creating some questions, um, within different topics, so...
And those surveys have been done in the past, and they have been anonymous. Students have responded anonymously. And we've had good participation, and they've been very helpful in terms of planning curriculum changes, um, and responding to other ways that were, um, I, I remember one several years ago at the middle school, that, uh, we started to see those high levels of stress that students were expressing, and they expressed them on the survey, and I know the middle school was very attentive to that, and, and that was a beginning of some changes in terms of, um, how we're trying to support students, and how we're trying to monitor that, and how we're trying to lower that stress. So, uh, it's, uh, I know when Mrs. Finch reached out and said, "Do you think we should look at this again?", I said, "Absolutely, because, um, we, we have to hear from the students."
So, that's...
And they have to have a safe way to reply to us.
Yes, and, and how can we get the most information? Um, as well, uh, the other topic that we, um, discussed was looking at other community resources for the mental health referral service that we're looking at, that other towns have, which is a great help to people who are looking to get referrals and get linked with, um, with, um, medical and healthcare professionals. A lot of times, people run into roadblocks with those, and it causes people not to take the steps they need, potentially, or it slows down the process, and it slows down getting, um, people help. So, this would be a community-wide, not just within our schools, our whole community could use it, um, but funding is an issue, um, so we were talking about other community resources that we could potentially, um, request assistance from. That was that.
Ms. Weiss, do you have a PTO report?
Well, I don't have a report, but this Saturday, they're having the trivia night. You can still get your tickets, lunenburgpto.org.
And are they, uh, they, they still raffling off the fifty dollars?
Yeah.
Are they still raffling off the fifty bucks?
I don't, there, yes. Yeah, there, there was, yeah, there was an incentive if you'd gotten your tickets.
If you got your tickets early, I don't remember the date.
Yeah, not...
I don't think that was early enough.
I think it may have passed.
The date might have passed, but still can get the tickets, and the, they were putting the baskets together today, they posted a couple of pictures of the baskets that they were gathering up for auction items.
I'm looking forward to it.
So, they look pretty good.
Oh, that's right, okay. Policy subcommittee, um, do you want to report on it?
Sure. Um, we met on Monday night, um, we discussed, um, primarily, um, sort of, um, we looked at, um, we talked about our, we talked about, um...
What was our policy?
Our drills. We, we spent a, a good deal of our meeting discussing...
The drill, the Alice drill.
Alice drill, and looking at, um, policy going forward on student, um, uh, student movements and walkouts.
Yes, political speech.
Political speech within that. We also, um, our, um, we did not get to just a little bit of our school committee, um, which, uh, part of being our committee, our six thousand series, which we just began to talk about.
Oh, yeah, we just, yes, yeah.
Which is all related to school committee, our, our, our tenure, all of that, very specific to the committee and being a member of the committee, but we barely started there, so that was, that was really, that was it.
Yep. Okay.
I did want to say, um, regarding the policy in question tonight, that, um, that it was clear as we went through this process, that there is some language in this that is confusing people, um, the, the addition of the five-year, um, period...
Yeah, more...
That is being misinterpreted with, uh, as I received the feedback, you know, I got a couple emails of, uh, folks not understanding the context of that five-year around the naming of a building, or when that occurs.
That the building would be renamed in five years, is what the...
No, no, that's not the intent. The intent is to hold off on naming something for five years.
But, uh, but we can, uh, we're certainly going to address this, but, um, while that was not necessarily in question tonight, I did pick up on that piece.
I did not know that.
And, you know, then the feedback around the fact that, um, by some grief experts, uh, you know, just quali, quantifying the language there, that we're referencing in that memorial policy, so, um, we'll continue to, to...
Okay.
We'll have the information available, um, and I don't, um, I know the Wall of Remembrance, the folks that we had met with earlier, I don't know if we want to reach out, uh, to them again and let them know.
The couple?
Um, well, there were three families.
There's three, three families.
Three families presented, three families. One came to our, our meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
But there were three families that, you know, um, had talked about that, so, and I just feel that we're continuing to work on that, I feel obligated to reach out to them again.
All right, can you repeat that about the new policy for the five years renaming?
It's not a renaming. There's no, no such renaming in our policy. If there's no, it was to hold off on possibly, okay, so, you know how we... Okay, okay. It says the faculty may be named after a person posthumously five years after the date of their death. That's it.
So, we...
So, you have to wait five years until after they pass away to actually name a building after them. It has nothing to do with changing any names, we had, that is not the intent at all. It, it, no one's, there's no name, there...
Deep emotion.
When you just read it?
Yeah.
I do not interpret it that it would be renamed after five years.
No, right?
It means there is potentially a waiting period.
A five-year waiting period.
For any new building...
Yes, moving forward.
Yes.
Not one that's built either.
Not now.
It's...
But we realized there was a lack of, when we started this last summer, there's so little...
Which is why we asked for feedback.
There's so little, we, in our policy regarding this, so...
We had nothing really to start with.
Right, so to, if you look at something in front of you, if there's nothing that exists, because when we started this, there was nothing that existed, so you have to look at, okay, part of our job now, we have, we're working on one thing, but we have to look at the future and say, another school committee is going to look at something else, and we need to give them some guidelines, and of course, you know, policy can be an ongoing, changing thing.
And it is.
Um, and it, and it does, but now we had very little here to go with.
Which is, we started it in November, and that's why we...
We started it before then.
Oh, it was, yes, it was.
I was going to say, early fall.
But, that's why we asked for feedback from the public, because we want to hear what people say about policies, that we, we do this with every policy, we have three readings of policy in the public, and we, she, um, Superintendent Combs always sends it out, always asks for input, and most of the time, we get nothing on our policies, nothing, no one sends us anything.
I, I do read the emails, so, I think, quite honestly, I feel like if it doesn't specifically pertain to one of my children, or something that is near and dear specifically to our family, I don't feel that it's necessarily my place to say, "Well, yeah."
Right, right.
And the other part is, we, we've talked, uh, Superintendent has worked to put things that are of great value to the whole district higher up, because in her, um, superintendent updates, because you get one from the schools, you get one from superintendent.
Yeah.
Like, it's hard to...
It gets lost.
You know, not everyone has time to, to go through everything, so if something is there, we're making sure that there's a link that goes into it, so people can click on a link, if, you know what I mean, that, that more information is at our, at our fingertips.
But, we're not trying to push any policies through, we do not do that, it's not...
We've had a first and a second reading regarding this policy with no feedback. Prior to today, this agenda was created, um, I got it last Saturday.
Yeah.
So, it was already created, Superintendent must have created it Thursday or Friday last week, and this was the agenda. So, on here, this reading was not there, it wasn't...
It wasn't placed there for any reason.
Placed there for a reason. It was on there because it was timed.
It's old business, that's where old business falls.
It would have happened last month, but we had a canceled meeting that we didn't reschedule.
So many canceled...
Can you control the weather?
No, are, are you sure?
And we felt like that wasn't a huge agenda meeting, so we said, "Okay, we can put everything together and just have a bigger content meeting in April," and, but this was to be a part of it. And we always have the third and final reading in a televised meeting, so that it, so that it can be heard from a televised, not, you know, so people can read it in a minute, if there's someone who follows that, and then they can also see it visually read, hear it in its final reading before we vote.
And that's standard practice.
I remember, I can do at least one meeting a year.
Okay. But, I don't want people to think we were trying to railroad anyone here, we weren't.
No, but is it, is someone looking into what happened and how it got taken down without permission?
Scott has it, I don't...
Oh, he has that information?
Uh, well, I don't know if he has that information, it wasn't, it was taken off the wall, we have no idea of who took it off the wall, there are at least six people with keys to those.
Well, shouldn't those three people be put in a room and find out who took the wall, who took it down?
I think we asked most of them, and nobody knew anything about it.
It, it went up without any notice to the school either, that was the other piece of it, was that there was no...
Yeah, we didn't know when it went up either, it was just up.
It wasn't up the last time I was in the building, which was at, at the dedication.
Right, correct, it was outside at the dedication.
Yeah.
Remember, it was up hanging, yeah, outside of the building, though. Do you, do you recall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hanging from the tree.
Yeah, it was hanging from the tree, yeah. So, we...
So, I was surprised to even hear that it was being taken down, because I didn't even know it was up.
So, then, nobody just put it up, right?
Well, Mr. Robbins put it up.
Put it up, they, I...
Yeah, we learned, I learned tonight, yeah.
Yeah, otherwise, we didn't...
So, at the moment, the building is also school property, yes?
School property, yes, it's a school building, to be used by all students in the school.
Well, so is the weight room, but that doesn't happen either.
Oh, it does. The weight room?
Kids that are playing spring sports cannot go in the weight room because of, uh, the athletic director. Kids that are not playing spring sports this year, right now, cannot use the weight room.
Really?
He has shut it down.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, we had an after-school program going on, um, so I'll check into that, I thought we had the after-school program.
The three to five going.
Yeah, yeah, with the, with somebody monitoring the weight room.
I've sent emails to him, and I even put Spatafino on it, and he said...
This is also news to us?
This is right.
Okay.
The weight room has been shut down for kids not playing spring sports.
Okay.
The eighth graders that had been going there to train off...
Yeah.
In order. Well, it's not just eighth graders, it's, yeah, these students.
Well, there are other students not playing spring sports that...
Mrs. Gertrude, um, you helped us get a, a grant. Do you remember how much that grant was for?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
For the person to be in the weight room.
Do you think, uh, did we run out of money?
Are they done? Was that for just winter?
So, I don't know the timing, I don't know the weeks it began, you remember, I was actually there doing, I was for the program for Lunenburg Town Employee, for the, um, the Maya Program, and what I know is there was no one in there between four and five PM, I'd occasionally see a student in there, but we're going back, January ten through March, uh, seventh? March fourteenth, yeah.
No, I, I will check into it, because...
Three thirty to four thirty.
No, we're talking about someone to monitor it.
Oh, who was, but he's now coaching track.
So, is that, the, the case is now that we don't have someone monitoring it?
So, what I'm saying, between, on Wednesdays, between four and five PM, there was not an adult who was in the room to, there was, there was no one in the weight room at the time, occasionally, I'd see a person walk in or walk out, but there was no youth that I was observing.
Well, the good news in all of this is, I can tell you that Mr. Spatafino was very conscientious about getting into the budget, that other things were given up, and they have in, in the budget, some funding to have a supervisor, so that can go on...
Right.
Uh, throughout the year. So, if it's not being open, it could be, because the grant funding that we had has run out, and we, we're not paying.
The reasoning I was given, the reasoning I was given is that they have twelve sport teams right now, and with the weather not being good, they need to use the weight room, so it's, if they're not using, if they're not into spring sport, they don't have the room for them to be in the weight room.
are going to come and present, they wanna do, um, clinics in the summer for girls, for field hockey.
Is that at our May fifth meeting?
Um, I asked them to give me dates around their spring sports, so I gave them two of dates, the two May dates, um, and I haven't, I haven't heard from...
Can we put it into April? Um, it, 'cause it's a discussion, it's a topic for discussion, so it would be more, it would, you know, consume a little bit of time versus, so I don't know if we have the room in that agenda.
You can work with the chair and see if we can get it in there.
Okay, yeah.
Get that report brought forward.
Okay.
But if, but if we don't have sufficient information, I also would rather, you know...
No, I think they'll be ready, yeah, because they were close, you know the timing of the school councils to be able to do this, so...
Okay, and that's it, that's all we have? That's all we have? We have to, hopefully we'll have a screening committee to appoint on the twenty-fifth, right? That was the date for appointment?
Yes, that is our date for appointment.
The deadline to apply is next Friday, April thirteenth.
Did it get extended?
No, that's the date that I had, that's for the screening committee, the other one was for the, um, school committee.
Superintendent's committee.
So this is for the screening committee for the superintendent's search, and if you are interested, you need to send me an email at hseroka@lunenburgonline.com.
I saw that, I just, I thought the date had passed.
Nope, it's next Friday.
April, April thirteenth, and the list of dates that are, we put those out so people could know what they were committing to.
Because there's a lot of dates, and we need to know that you're available for all of them. I didn't think you would be.
I'm gonna drive it.
Okay, so you need to send me a letter of interest, okay?
Okay.
Okay, um, so I think we're...